I dedicate this to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I will call this school board meeting of District 524 to order.
Kirby Anderson.
Yes.
Natalie Knutson.
Yes.
Melanie Cole.
Yes.
Matthew Lumpy. Is Sehrami's present? Steven Biggerson?
Yes.
We have a forum.
Thank you. Can I get a motion to approve our agenda?
So move.
A second. And all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. Our agenda is approved, so we will move on then to reports, starting with our elementary principal, Scott Colbeck.
Good evening. Is this where we want the podium, or do we want it back?
You can put it back, that's fine. Wherever you feel comfortable, Scott. How does that sound?
Kirby might appreciate this. Okay. Kind of opened the door for that. All right, well, good evening. So it's been a while since I've been here. I don't think we gave a report in December. So, wanted to maybe talk a little bit with you about attendance. We finished our second quarter of school last week, Thursday. And we looked at some attendance at McKinley through the first semester of the school year, and looked at that ninety percent threshold or above, and wanted to look at how many of our students at McKinley School have attended school nine out of ten days or better during the first half of the year, and it's at seventy-six percent of our student body has attended school at a ninety percent rate or more, which means then, of course, the other twenty-four percent of them have attended school less than ninety percent of the time. We also looked a little bit further and just were wondering how many how many of our students have actually attended school ninety-five percent or more? Because I think if you can attend school ninety-five percent of the time or more, nineteen out of twenty days, over the course of an entire school year, it means that you're missing eight days, eight and a half days or less. That's pretty awesome. But thirty-eight percent of our kids, thirty-eight percent of our kids at McKinley have been attending school ninety-five percent of the time or more. So then when we look at Adams, we look at the same thing. It's looking a little bit better at Adams. So we had eighty-six percent of our student body at Adams School attending school ninety percent or more. So with seventy-six percent at McKinley, it's eighty-six percent at Adams, which means that fourteen percent of our student body is attending less than ninety percent. And we also looked at how many have ninety-five percent or better attendance, and it's fifty-six percent of our kids at Adams. We noticed a considerable dip in attendance, especially at McKinley, between the first and second quarters. And we think that has a lot to do with the season that we're in. But we're also in that same season at Adams School, but for whatever reason it has impacted, I think, the younger kids more. I will soon be visiting every first and second grade classroom like I did at the end of first quarter, and recognize kids who had two absences or fewer during second quarter. And we do that in first and second grade. And we hand them a little attendance charm that they can put on, a little necklace of some sort. We don't do that in kindergarten. Something that we've just never done in kindergarten, but we've done it in first and second grade. Probably start doing it in third grade next year, being that third graders will be at McKinley and Adams. So that was a little bit about attendance. Wanted to mention to you a little bit about, and I've talked with you in the past about this. We do this almost every year now for the past number of years, something called One School, One Book. One School, One Book. And we're gonna do that in March this year. And it's Mr. Knuck, he's a first grade teacher at Adams School, year in and year out, kind of leads this thing. But we're gonna read the third book in a series. I brought them, actually. So, a couple of years ago, this was the book that we read, One School, One Book. This was something that all first and second graders did across McKinley and Adams. Sorry. No, that's fine. So, two years ago, this was our One School, One Book. And this was so well received and went over so well. Come on in, Mr. This went over so well that last year, we did the second book in the series, which went over so well that we're going to do the third book in the series this year. So in order for our, I'll use our first graders as an example. In order for them to really know what's going on here in this book, they have to know what happened in the first and second books. So what our first grade teachers are doing is they are using these as read-alouds before we get to this in March. So, if you're interested, I can just pass these around again. First one, second one. The hard copy is the one that we're doing this year. Want to tell you a little bit about something that was really, really fun that happened today at Adams School. We had a magician perform not once but twice for our students at Adams School. His name is Curtis Head, and our PTO is paying for him to come and perform for all of our students at McKinley, Adams, and Cleveland over the next two days. So he will give a total of seven performances, and it will conclude with a performance tomorrow evening at Cleveland School as one of our Title I parent events. He had a great message of the importance of reading. He told a story through his magic of when he was a ten-year-old boy. He became interested in learning magic tricks, so he went to his local public library and would check out books and learn magic tricks. He has had no other job in his life than to be a magician. He's fifty years old, so it's really interesting, great story. He was so captivating. His performances were forty-five minutes in length. So tomorrow morning, he will do two performances at McKinley, in the afternoon, two more at Cleveland, and then he will just remain set up at Cleveland for the evening performance. So he's a gentleman who lives in Becker, Minnesota. His wife was a teacher, has a couple children. And he was engaging for the students, but also for the adults as well. He just told some really good stories. He's clever. And the kids were wowed, as were the adults. And he brought along his pet pigeon duo. That was kind of the highlight of the show. And I'm sure I just stole a bunch of stuff that Mrs. Rund was gonna talk about, so she can maybe elaborate on that. I would like to thank Mr. McGowan. He brought his middle school band students over to the elementary schools in December, and they did some small group ensembles and went into the various classrooms and played their instruments in small groups. Kids appreciate that. I think it's really good for the middle school kids to perform. I think that some of them get a little bit nervous, even though they're performing for five and six and seven and eight-year-olds, they get a little nervous, but that's okay. And I just wanted to thank Mr. McGowan for that. And then I want to thank our music teachers at Adams and McKinley, Ruth Umlough and Michelle Dannison. They put in a lot of time and effort preparing kids and just getting ready for some, what we call our Christmas sing-alongs at our schools. These weren't things that were open to the public, but are certainly a lot of fun and appreciated by the students and staff at those schools. And then lastly, I just wanted to mention and then recognize all of our interventionists in our schools. They just wrapped up what we call Winter Universal Screening, something that we do three times a year. They take the results of all of these screenings for every single student and then share the results with classroom teachers. So today, one of the first grade teachers showed me her class roster and showed me how after the first screening, early in the year, you'd see more red and yellow on the paper than green. Now, the second time they went through, you saw less red, more yellow, and more green. And as the year goes along and they do another screening here at the end of the year, the idea is you want to get the reds to the yellows and the yellows to the greens, and it just kind of paints a picture the way they kind of lay that out. So that's the idea behind that. You have various benchmarks over the course of the year that change as the year goes along. And it was just some really interesting and good information for our teachers to have, and then our interventionists to use as they determine which kids might we be able to consider exiting out of some of these programs, and maybe we can get some other kids in that might need it. So, just wanted to recognize their good work. So that's my report for this evening. I can answer any questions the board might have.
Any questions for Principal Colbeck? Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next report then is from Tanira, our elementary principal.
Good evening, everyone. Scott is right. I was gonna share a little bit about the magician coming, but he was, has a lot more information than I do about that, just because he got to see him today. So I'm really excited that I get to see the magician tomorrow afternoon and tomorrow evening. And I'm really hoping we have a really good turnout of the families with students who are in Title I. It's just a great opportunity for all of our title staff to, us included, to make those connections with families and just welcome them into the school for an entertaining event that's gonna be very motivating for their students. So I'll skip over what I was gonna say there, but I too am bringing some attendance information for you for the first semester. Our third graders are having an average daily attendance of ninety-seven point five percent, which is great. And our fourth grade is attending ninety-six point six percent days. So we have really positive attendance with our communication reinforcing the countywide policy. Parents are communicating more readily and calling in and planning ahead. We have a couple of families that just have kind of a trip of a lifetime coming up, and they are contacting us now and making a plan for when they're gonna be out of town at the end of February. So our families have gotten that message and are really working with us, so we're appreciative of that. During the month, I wanted to share a little bit too about our character education lessons. During the month of January, our focus has been growth mindset and perseverance. One of the, we're using a lot of children's literature books to share these themes, so to speak. So this is the book that every classroom has a copy of, and the teachers are either reading this book to their class or some of these titles, you can find a neat YouTube video that it's read to you and there's a little bit of animation or movement to it, but this is a great book that we use for growth mindset. Today, Katie A. went to all, or Katie A., yeah, went to classrooms to do classroom lessons on perseverance. So kind of that stick-with-it-ness, and you can persevere through life's challenges and do quite well. In the month of February, our themes are gonna be listening and honesty. And just kind of the topic is gonna be like, being able to listen shows respect and is also a way of learning about yourself from others and from your surroundings. We all need to, if people are gonna talk, we want to take turns so that the person speaking has that opportunity to be heard, and then you learn more about them. As well as when you're listening to other people's feedback, you learn more about yourself as well. So kind of both sides of the coin there. And then honesty is a virtue that builds character, instills honor, and fosters a deep sense of self-worth. And so as we're doing lessons on character education, it certainly aligns with our portrait of a graduate and some of these virtues that we really want our students to instill in our students and help them be positive citizens as they venture out to the future. And this was one of the titles that's coming up in February, where there's a particular child in this book who learns to, learns a little more self-control and doesn't need to blurt as much, and finds the value of becoming a good listener. So just pass those around. It's kind of, children's literature is great, and so it's a great tool to use. It resonates with children of all ages, so it's great. Tomorrow, Scott also mentioned our universal screenings have been taking place. So tomorrow at Cleveland, we are gonna have our data review to look at students' math scores and look at, identify those who have made progress, adequate progress, and are ready to maybe exit some intervention programming, and others that could really use a boost or some extra support. So tomorrow's the day to identify students who've been in the area of math. And then on Friday afternoon of this week, we're gonna take a close look at the reading scores. And that's with our, the STAR assessments that we use for frequent progress monitoring, and then also that universal screening data tool that's part of intervention monitoring. This coming Thursday and Friday, we have spelling bees for the third and fourth graders. The fourth graders will be Thursday morning at, yeah, Thursday morning here at the auditorium at Kennedy, and then our fourth graders will be Friday morning, or vice versa. We have fifteen participants in each grade level, so those students who are participating took a written spelling test and they needed to score twenty, third graders need to have twenty correct words or more, and fourth graders need to have twenty-two correct words or more. So it's exciting that we have fifteen participants at each grade level. That's a great experience for them. Krista Simon-Guard, our talent development teacher, is coordinating that with the Scripps Spelling Bee. So thank you to her for making the arrangements for that academic challenge. And then on January thirty-first, our fourth graders, we have fifty fourth graders who will be, are taking a NAPE assessment, and that's the National Assessment of Educational Progress. Students are selected different years to take that, participate in that, and so this year, our fourth graders are participating. This is often called the nation's report card. Minnesota participates in NAPE so that we can compare our students' performance to the performance of students in other states and the nation as a whole. And the samples, a sample of students are randomly selected by the NCDS to participate in this assessment. And then NAPE's two goals, one is to compare student achievement in states and other jurisdictions, and then the second goal is to track changes in achievement of fourth, eighth, and twelfth grade students over time in the areas of math, reading, writing, science, and other content domains. So there's a team, I believe a team of two, that will be spending their day at Cleveland on January thirty-first, and will have a session in the morning and then a session in the afternoon. And then lastly, February is right around the corner, and February is American Heart Health Month. So our fire teachers are going to have our students participate in the, what is it called? The Kids' Heart Challenge. It used to be Hoops for Heart. Now it's Jump Rope for Hearts and Hoops for Heart. Now it's called the Kids' Heart Challenge. And so they're gonna be focusing on the importance of health heart, and then participating in the activities that the American Heart Association promotes. And it's certainly an area that touches everybody, everybody who has a heart, but then also families, family members with heart challenges and heart concerns. It really resonates with those families, and so there's always just great participation from families throughout the community and with their donations to this great cause. It's also Dental Health Awareness Month in February too, so we have some lessons, dental hygienist educators coming in to provide dental health lessons for all of the third and fourth grade classes as well. So good things are happening. And that's my report.
Any questions for Principal Hirst? All right, thank you. We'll move on to our next report. Our middle school principal, I first.
Hi, good evening. We'll start with the Middle School Knowledge Bowl. They wrapped up their season before the holiday break. It's an academic competition that showcases knowledge and intellectual abilities of middle school students. This year, we had thirteen participants in the seventh and eighth grade. Ms. Claire Stich took over the lead because Nathan Arns had been doing it in the past. So Claire took that over for us, and one of the big highlights was the Fergus Falls Fire, because each has a Fergus Falls, and then they get to make their own little name. But the Fergus Falls Fire Team placed first at the November twenty-ninth event. So I'm happy that we have that opportunity for kids and that Ms. Stich was willing to just take that and run with us. Appreciate that. One other item from prior to the holiday that I wanted to, the sixth graders visited the Historical Society. So Mr. Ratz and Ms. Weldy took sixth graders from the Maroon Team on a visit, and, and, your eyes got really big, and I was like, oh boy, okay. Missy presented on the fur trade, and then the students got the, had the opportunity to explore the rest of the gallery. So, and at that time, they were studying the fur trade in Minnesota history, so it really tied in and was a natural fit, so. Now over to the new year. We had Saturday School. The last two Saturdays, we've been doing this now for the second year, the last two Saturdays of second quarter, we offered Saturday School for any student that is not doing well in second quarter. As makes sense, the beginning of the year typically goes pretty well. Students are excited and they're doing their homework, and then as the year goes on, it's hard to maintain the same level of enthusiasm. So we offered two right after the break. We had student numbers for those in the low teens, so we had students taking advantage of that. And we'll see where their grades show out here when grades are due on Wednesday. We'll also continue to offer Saturday School in third and fourth quarter. We have five Saturdays in third quarter and five in fourth quarter for students to work on work when it's more current, as opposed to something to do in the summer when they can't remember what they're working on. So we have Saturday School. We also have the Middle School Spelling Bee, middle school grades five, six, seven, eight. They're all combined into one competition. We had thirty-five or thirty-eight participants this year. The winners, I saw this got placed on Facebook, so I appreciate that. Jacob Warner is a seventh grader. He placed first. Second, or second place was sixth grader Alexander Edgerly. They're moving on to the regional competition at Lakes Country on February sixth. So thank you to Krista Simon-Guard for her work in planning and following through all the work for that. We also, I want to put us all in the smart category, because we all want to talk about attendance today, which is natural at the end of the semester. We also saw a dip at the middle school, which is somewhat expected, especially with the time of year. We're gonna have some illness, more illness this time of year, so we saw some dip. But the year-to-date in fifth and sixth grade is how I did it. The year-to-date, when we exclude medical appointments, is ninety-four point four percent. So we have a large majority of our students coming every day. In the seventh and eighth grade, when we take out medical excuses, we're at ninety-three point seven. Back about MEA time, we were about two percentage points higher than that. So we have people coming every day. A lot of kids come to school every day. We continue to address attendance with students. And I don't hit a lot of fifth graders with attendance or sixth graders with attendance, but I'll talk to their parents. And then grade seven, eight, we'll talk to students and parents alike. So I think that's really been helping. We definitely see an uptick in attendance when we address it. Okay, the next one's a story. Ready? I'm not so good at Mr. Colbeck's stories, but I didn't hand these out right away because I knew you'd be distracted from the rest of the report. So, it was not a project-based learning, but then it was. So the recent new Minnesota State Science Standards encourage kids to focus on phenomenon-based experiences. Experiences where students define problems and carry out investigations. They want students to design models and collect data. So Ms. Tysoe, this is right up her alley. She is really motivated to do that. And she presented an in-depth experience to her students at the prairie. The students used their time at the prairie to simulate predator and prey. So prey was given two minutes to go hide in the field, in the prairie, and they would find good hiding spots, and some were wearing camel and some weren't. Natural selection. The predators turned their back so they couldn't find them. And I think there was four predators, and then there was twenty prey. So naturally, the simulation said, all the predators are well-fed and gonna reproduce. Right? Because they all have full bellies. There's plenty of food. But when the predator, as their simulations continued, the predators, they got to have too many predators and then no more prey. So then they determined that the predators would have to locate other places, or they would simply die off from starvation. This is what their simulation. So I'm talking to Ms. Tysoe about it. That's the short version. But really, these students were just playing hide-and-seek. They didn't know that. So we're talking about, and I'm like, Ms. Tysoe, your PBL is fantastic. And she's like, well, this isn't a PBL even, because we don't have a public product. Whoa. Heck, here's what some of the teachers at the middle school are doing, is they're creating slideshows to demonstrate, and then they were sharing that out. So she took that idea and created these books. Everything in the books are, all the pictures were taken by the students. They took those pictures, learned how to upload them, created document. Every letter of the alphabet is in there, and they had to find words in their learning. It's really in-depth, a lot of stuff, but they had to find words that they could plug in, and then they defined them using their own words. Oh, I think it's really crazy good. Yeah. So now they're published authors, is what Ms. Tysoe was trying to say. So she took the ball and ran. They created these books. And if I remember from last year, Mr. Colbeck or Ms. Rund, or Mr. Colbeck or Ms. Rund, had a similar end result, and I don't recall what that was. But that's just people that want to work hard. Ms. Tysoe says, hey, here's what we're gonna do.
This one is copyrighted.
Is it?
That's what it says.
So you've got a good variety here. You've got, we have, we meet kids where they're at, right? That's what we have to do to be fair to them. But some kids are going above and beyond, and some are doing what they're capable of. So you get a really nice sense of their ability levels. And they're using, they're doing all this work on their Chromebook, on their account. Ms. Tysoe gave them the template, and they had to make it work. She said it took way longer to create these booklets than she could ever imagine. But that's what they did, and then they can be proud of that work. Same thing with the simulation. Ms. Tysoe did it safe. This is what we're doing. They had to decide how many minutes would they get to hide, how big of an area would they get to hide in, could some wear camel or some not. They decided all of those things as a bunch of ten or eleven-year-olds. It didn't, it was not smooth, that's for sure, because I was there for some of that. But I thought that was really, as we're talking about the portrait, this is a really good celebratory item, great evidence. And you get to enjoy that.
Need some food. Pretty neat.
Yeah. Fun stuff. That goes in the.
Which grade levels are?
So good luck, Mr. Anderson, because they're all distracted, they'll, good booklets. But anyone, does anyone have any questions for me?
Any question for Principal Hurst? All right, thank you. All right, next board report. Our high school principal, Bert Ginnis.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'll start with our National Honor Society. We had our new juniors inducted and seniors two weeks ago. We had a large number of students able to be inducted. We had thirty-three students who met our expectations. And I thank the seven teachers at the high school who spent a couple hours after school before winter break to get those applications reviewed and allow us to get thirty-three new students inducted. The first, I think it was the first week back, wasn't it, Jeff, that we had that? We also had some opportunities that meet the portrait of a graduate. Right before winter break, a couple weeks, we had been talking in leadership. Outer time's been going well. Kids have been asking for a little bit of something different. And we've, kids have been communicating with us. So one of the things we were hearing is, instead of doing lessons in Monday for SEL, we would do lessons on Friday where they were actually hands-on and doing work, and they were choosing where they wanted to go, and they didn't have to be with their normal Monday outer time teacher. Some students decided homework was their priority because they wanted none over the weekend. But we had almost all of our teachers sign up for an activity, anywhere from kids making beads, coloring, drawing, all those type of things. We had some yoga going on with kids. We also had an opportunity for kids who had never welded to go over and weld with Mr. Woodsky. So they had a lot of opportunities just to do what was good for them, be in a space that was safe, and an opportunity for them to do an activity that was a little more meaningful maybe for them than ones that we do on Mondays. So we will be doing another à la carte. So we will do, we'll be doing another à la carte in about a week or two. I think we're gonna wait a week or two after Snowball. And then the kids will get the same opportunities to do something like that again. And we'll take a Monday SEL off for that because it's the same, same type of thing. Some of the things that will be coming up here real shortly, next week is Snowball. Coronation is at one-thirty in the auditorium. Kids are excited about that. Wednesday, we are doing our Snow Olympics. We have band and other activities not in the building. So we had to go ahead and do our Olympics on Wednesday so all of our kids could have a chance to participate. We are throwing a curveball at our kids next Monday and Wednesday. We'll see how this goes for them. Due to the fact that they're gonna miss multiple period fours and fives that week. Period four will be during otter time on Monday, right before coronation. And otter time for Wednesday will be fifth period, but during otter time to make up some of the time we've missed. We figured we give our kids a little bit of an opportunity to try this. And heck, if we have a snow day and we miss a couple of days over first or second hour, we have the ability to make some things up and give this a test run. We also spent time last Friday in PLC work in preparation of our March opportunity also. Are cleaning some documents up, making sure things are in where they need to be, adding some assessments. We also are bringing someone in on April nineteenth named Garth Larson. He's gonna come in and get information from our PLC teachers to find out where they're at, what's working for them, what's not working for them in the PLCs and what additional, what should be our next steps as we go into next year? With the conversation on possibly having him come back and help lead for two days next year in that process as we move towards more data-driven decisions within our classrooms and some of our assessments. Registration has started and part of our Mondays that when we're not doing otter time, are not doing SEL and otter time. We're doing career and college readiness. So our ninth through eleventh graders are spending the next four weeks, they're so excited, reviewing for registration, going through U-Scienc, MCIS, our coursebook, our career pathways and just filling through a Google Doc where they can type in or print out and write into it. All the things that they think they want to do next year in courses, what are some courses that they want to take? Especially in their career pathway that they think they might want to experience after high school. They also have a credit inventory they're completing that has to be completed and turned in. This year for registration, all the students will meet with their otter time teacher and actually register at night. So we will be using zero minutes in our school day to register students unless they don't, aren't able to make it that night. So we'll be using registration night opportunity to build relationships with our parents. Also to offer our counselors the opportunity to be out in the foyer, answering questions with parents before they have to register or if they have questions on those pieces. Teachers have sent out, we'll be sending out a document for parents to sign up. They have to come in either on the thirteenth or fifteenth between four and seven forty-five. We're excited. Kids are asking a lot of questions. We put a Google Doc out today to get all the questions they may have. So we're able to answer those and put a presentation together that is purposeful for our students. We sent out videos for all ninth, tenth and eleventh grade students, or tenth, eleventh and twelfth grade students for next year with all the courses and expectations, with additional opportunities for parents to ask us if they have questions. And what are our seniors doing? They're getting their resume ready and cover letter to send to Mr. Anderson so I can reply back to each one of our hundred and sixty-five kids on how their resume and cover letters are working. The other pieces we're talking about, we're finishing checklist two up. Checklist three will come. One of the things, I was in Ms. Christensen's class today and they asked, you're making us do a lot of work. And I said, yep, the career kids or gap kids are gonna talk about, are you living with mom and dad next year? If not, who are you living with? All the things that go with it, insurance, payments of things. Do you actually have enough money to make that happen? So we want to have, they're, you're gonna make those decisions and go through some documents to figure out if that works for them. Ties into the financial life management course they take as a junior. Our kids who are going on to college are filling FASA out, asking questions of our counselors on that. Having parents come in that they need support with that. We also are telling kids, hey, if you've chosen where you're going next year, most likely you have a fee to pay to save yourself a dorm room or a space to live. So what is that fee? How do you pay it? When does that have to be paid? So they'll be going through those doc, they'll be finalizing those pieces in February, March. So when April and May come, they can graduate and move on and know that they have all their boxes checked for their career pathways after high school. Former student of ours, Jared Pigeon, actually came and presented to our ninth through twelfth grade students last Monday at Martin Luther King Junior Day. So he talked about the opportunities he built on what Phyllis Braxton had spoke about when she was here. Filling in the pieces of everybody has a right to have thoughts and discussions. And what was the civil rights movement then? What does it look like now? What does it possibly look like moving forward and how can we participate in things like that? Our weight room, if you have the opportunity, go down and take a peek at it, is finished and students are back in using it. They're quite excited. We are working on a YST grant at the high school for about a hundred thousand dollars. The last one that we wrote, we did not get. We hope that this one, using Amy Johnson, a community resource, bringing some other documents that have been written in the past to kind of put in some opportunities for us there. The nice piece is Amy knows the person who's gonna view it. So we already have about half of what we wanted to ask checked off the boxes. That, that can't work. So we have to go back and figure out what else we're gonna ask for. Most of it will be with work-based learning. It really goes into getting kids off campus. So we're really gonna push our seniors next year to actually take work-based learning. Not as a requirement, but as something that would be a great experience for them and an opportunity. Attendance isn't as great at the high school. I don't know how the state finishes, finalizes and determines average daily membership. So until I have that, I'm not able to say what our percentages are, but I do know this. We have a lot more kids in the building every day because when they don't come, they don't get to participate in our theater and our activities. So kids are not missing out on the opportunity to be in school anymore as they had before. It was a good move for us to move forward with holding the kids accountable and their parents to being here and being present during the school day so they could participate. We still have doctor's notes. They're bringing those in. Parents are being really good about vacations, calling and letting us know ahead of time. Kids are doing the paperwork filled out. So we are appreciative of that. The ALC raised over thirteen hundred dollars. They bought gifts for teenagers over the holiday break and they donated the money to the, and the rest of the money to the Salvation Army. Session two of the Otter Adventures started last week and will run through mid-February. The third session will run March and April. She's excited about that opportunity. Trying to find more kids that might fit those, that opportunity for Otter Adventures after school. Trimester three schedule has been, the trimester schedule has been beneficial for students regarding both credit recovery and their credit attainment at the ALC. The hours are long enough. If work, it allows for them to get work done and work completed in the trimester that they need to. The workshop on January nineteenth is consistent of the ALC teaching staff and honing their CBE, basically standards-based grading, for tracking proficiencies with students. They all had to do one or two classes. They're all moving more towards that piece. They also had a training on their technology. Of course, kids push back a little bit when things are different. Kids are really enjoying it. They are able to test out and move into things that they don't know and move through the content quicker, which makes things a lot easier for them also. The MAPS Stars members are going to have state legislators on February twenty-first here to advocate for the alternative learning. The last time I was over there, a school came up to visit the ALC and the MAPS Star students presented to them and they were wowed. So the kids are really excited about having state legislators come and be able to present to them. And they also have the MAP Conference coming up February seventh through the ninth. Three staff members will be attending that and I can't wait for our kids to go in the spring to have their opportunity when they present on their experiences, when they choose their areas of expertise in their trimester. The IQ started second semester. We have an influx of a few students starting second semester with us that paused and are coming back to the high school for them. We also did some onboarding over Christmas break to start semester two. Mr. Johnson was here last week to get anybody who is in IQ, but is, or our high school taking IQ class to make sure they knew the expectations, how to log in, especially if they're new students. Any student who failed an IQ class that was Fergus Falls High School student is not allowed to take an IQ class next semester. They need support. We wanted them in a class where we had the ability to monitor their academics. If they do well, they'll get another chance again when we get back to next year. Ryan's working with the elementary staff for another social event here in Fergus Falls. It went really well, the last one they had. And a huge thank you to Jen Roos. I don't know if many of you know that she took over Suhrinkey's high school courses for the remainder of semester one. Put a lot of time in to make sure the students got what they needed and made sure that they were able to be successful in the classes they were finishing up. And he, like I said, he had a meeting with some of the students that are gonna do some IQ classes during otter time the last couple of days, last week to make sure kids are ready to go and moving on. One thing nice about how we've got that going this year, we had about sixty or sixty-five Fs every week last year on IQ kids. This year we have four kids total with eight Fs total. So it's really working well for us to monitor them and have them stay in space. Any questions?
Is there, when the legislators come, is there some legislation afoot for ALCs or?
I think they want to be able to communicate and want that opportunity to go in. Being part of Troy Huguen's Piece and Tales coming up, I don't know how much legislation will be coming. But I think they want the opportunity to make sure that they're hearing their voices. I just got an email today from you about having, so I emailed our social studies department to see if they'd be interested in that. So and then Jeff is coming back in February, so he wasn't able to make it. He's gonna come lock the building with me one day. So thank you.
Thank you. All right, then our last report is from Superintendent Jeff Drake.
Good evening. I'll start out with some thank yous. This is Paraprofessional Recognition Week. And so I just wanted to share my appreciation for all the hard work and dedication and service to students and families from our paraprofessionals. Often paraprofessionals are the staff members that know our individual students better than anyone else. And so those strong connections really help our students navigate life and make or break their days. So appreciate all their hard work and dedication. I want to say thanks to the Five Forty Four staff and students, the Fergus Falls Police Department and Otter Tail Coaches for their assistance in the swatting that we experienced on Monday, the fifteenth. And so I just want to, especially for the listeners, go through the swatting definition. Can basically take two forms. One would be a call-in of a false emergency. And that is designed to mobilize our emergency personnel to an emergency that doesn't exist. So disrupting their procedures, their access to address real-life emergencies as they arise. And then the form that we, that the swatting event took for us and other school districts in the state and some of our local businesses was a call-in with a threat. So we received three phone calls, one to Adams, one to Cleveland and one to Kennedy Secondary School, each detailing a threat to the safety and welfare of our students and staff. These, these are anxiety-provoking, producing. I want to, again, especially thank the staff. They responded as they were trained to do. Our students, vast majority of them responded the way we would expect them to. And of course, we've had a great working relationship with the Fergus Falls Police Department for a long time. These threats impacted four other businesses that day in our community. Pelican Rapids also received a threat. So did New York Mills. Both of those districts, as I understand it, did not have students in school that day because it was Martin Luther King Junior holiday. So their experience was a little different than ours. But there are also threats that took place to a school in Aiken and also Isani Counties. So going through this, utilizing our protocols and procedures after the fact, we've done some pretty extensive debriefing. We look at what worked well, what went well and what didn't. And so this gives us an opportunity to reflect and to reexamine protocols and processes and procedures in the future and make our response even better and more effective moving forward. Hopefully, I would like to be able to stand here in front of the board and the community and say that we won't experience another one of these this school year. But as you look at the increasing incidence of this kind of thing in our state and across the country, we certainly can't, can't assume that this, something similar won't happen again. So what it does, we'll follow our process and procedures and respond accordingly. It is absolutely necessary and essential that we take every one of these reports with the utmost seriousness to protect our students and staff and our community. Link in Phase Two project progress. So this will basically be a pictorial progress report. We have the steel studs going in, framing the classrooms and some spaces there. There's some additional product that is on the way that's caused a bit of a delay as they ran into some weather across the country that delayed delivery. But it's, it's proceeding nicely. It's actually now taking the shape where you can start to envision how the classrooms are laid out, et cetera. This would be a photo on the west side heading east. And the wall that you see with the insulation, that's the large firewall that runs horizontally across the building that essentially separates what will be kindergarten from our early childhood preschool services. And from this vantage point, what you're basically looking at is the cafeteria area that the kindergarten students will eat in next year. This is a view from east heading west. So the firewall, as you look at this picture, would be to your left. And the larger open space that you see is an area for like maker space, collaborative learning, those kinds of things where you can gather, it'll be large enough where you can gather more than one classroom together and do those hands-on activities that are so essential to developing those higher-order thinking skills. So the project's definitely taking shape. Excited about it. We have upcoming meetings with a committee to design the playground and another meeting to meet with a representative for furniture so that we can start to pick out those things moving forward. Tonight's an exciting night at the Otter Field House. It's Alumni Night, which is done in coordination with the Five Forty Four Foundation. Minnesota Motors is always so gracious to us in that they are covering admission for the patrons to tonight's event. But both our boys and girls' basketball teams are facing off against the Morehead Spuds. And having heard a little bit of the history of this rivalry, over the course of time, there've been some fantastic battles that have taken place in that gym between those two schools. And hopefully it's an exciting evening and a fun get-together for our fans tonight and our players. Congratulations are in order for our Snowball royalty. And Principal Anderson referenced the coronation taking place this coming Monday, January twenty-ninth at one-thirty in the auditorium. And then hopefully this works, this is courtesy of Jessica Colehase in her kindergarten classroom. But this is super cool.
Bye, Ms. Jessica's class.
Polar bears are one of them.
Polar bears are the biggest bear.
They're the biggest land carnivore.
They can be ten feet tall.
Polar bears are not white.
Their fur is actually queer.
Their fur is hollow.
Polar bears have two layers of fur.
Their skin is black.
Those seal.
All their babies are fat cats.
Polar bear live in Arctic.
Polar bears live in dens.
Polar bears are great swimmers.
They can swim twenty-five miles apart.
So, I mean, this is adorable, right? So that's part of it. It's just super creative. But there's just a lot of interesting facts those students learned at the age of six years old about polar bears. And I could watch this kind of stuff all day. It's mesmerizing to me. So thanks to Jessica for her work with those students and their work on a very creative and informative project. And that, I will turn it over for questions.
Any questions for Superintendent Drake? All right.
Thank you.
Okay, then we'll move on to our general consent items. We have minutes of our reorganization school board meeting and regular school board meeting held on January eighth, twenty-twenty-four. And then we have our bills January ninth through the twenty-second.
Yes, this is our, the smaller number. Yes, this is our, the smaller number of bills this time because we do most of them at the beginning of the month. So Melanie and I went together with Renee and went through bills before this meeting. Lots and lots and lots of officials, hockey officials, basketball officials, wrestling officials, you name it. So we've seen a lot of those, seen some, quite a few, quite a few bills being paid now. Superintendent Drake talked about Lincoln. So we've seen some checks going out to for concrete work, for acoustics and floors, for drywall. So there's some, there's about sixty thousand between those three vendors. Eighty-two thousand for Lake Chemical. R.A. Morton are helping to monitor the project, thirty thousand. Twin City Hardware, eleven thousand, nineteen thousand to Vinco. So all of those were just this month for Lincoln. We had a couple of different other ones we looked at. One of the things we discussed a little bit about our bills is our Constellation Energy is about twenty thousand for Lincoln. And fifteen thousand of that was for Lincoln itself. And the rest of it was for children's work. But we're hoping that the district saves some money this year. The winter's been mild and we haven't seen much snow. So we're hoping to see some savings on energy bills as well as on snow removal. So, I think, one other comment here. Here it is. Food service, we did, we bought some ThinkPads, five thousand dollars worth came out of food service budget to upgrade the computers that are used for students and staff as they come through. And then I think we had, the big check went through for the weight room for a hundred seventy-six thousand dollars, which is a combination of dollars that were raised from the community as well as, I think we've got a grant in for looking for some extra dollars if that happened to not. We'll stay tuned on that one. So that's about it. Thanks for Melanie for coming in. And thanks for Renee for everything that's in order as usual.
Thank you. Okay, then we'll move on to the meeting.
Good evening, everyone. I have a few items here for board approval. Starting off with certified staff hires, we have an increase to Jaclyn Ness Ledwick and Jennifer Smith. Jaclyn with the art over at our ALC, and then Jennifer Smith with our IEP Academy as a special ed teacher. And then hire of Sydney Albertson, school psychologist, and that's effective next school year, the twenty twenty-four, twenty-five school year. So support staff hires, Amanda Opsol, Council Receiving Associate. Rebecca Montgomery, Special Ed Para, along with Angie Walter, Special Ed Para, and Ashley Thompson, Special Ed Para. They'll be starting either this week or Ashley's case, February fifth. Support staff resignations, Tiffany Fidler, Special Education Paraprofessional, Kamoshia Breeding, Special Education Paraprofessional, and Jaden Campbell, Food Service. Administration hires and reassignments, we have administration hire of Nancy Riard, and that's a Director of Special Ed beginning July first, twenty twenty-four. And the reassignment of John Steinbrenner, Lincoln School Principal, and then again effective July first, twenty twenty-four. And then last, the twenty-three, twenty-four agreement between ISD Five Forty-four and Ferguson Falls Education Association, the teacher's master agreement. So I would recommend all these for school board approval.
Can I get a motion to approve our general consent items?
So moved.
In a second.
One second.
Any discussion on them?
I wanna mention that the contract agreement between Ferguson Falls Education Association and the school district is ten point eight-three percent over two-year cost to the district. So very significant increase. And it will probably factor into discussions we're having later in the evening. So if we approve this, which I recommend that we do, it is going to require us to trim the sails. So, just have comments on that.
Any other discussion?
I think just appreciation for the board members who are on the teams and a lot of time and effort and help from Renee as well. So appreciate what you have.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. Consent items are approved. And we have one item on our old business for fiscal year twenty twenty-four, seniority list for Independent School District Five Forty-four. Can I get a motion to approve that list?
So moved.
In a second.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. That is approved. Then we have a resolution directing the administration to take recommendations for reductions in programs and positions and reasons therefore. Whereas the financial condition of the school district dictates that the school board must reduce expenditures. And whereas this reduction in expenditure may include discontinuance of positions and discontinuance or curtailment of programs. And whereas a determination must be made as to which teachers' contracts must be terminated and not renewed and which teachers may be placed on unrequested leave of absence without pay or fringe benefits affecting discontinuance of positions. Be it resolved by the school board of Independent School District Number Five Forty-four as follows. Let the school board hereby direct Superintendent of Schools and Administration to consider the discontinuance of programs or positions to affect trade economies in this school district, reduce expenditures, and make recommendations to the school board for discontinuance of programs and curtailment of programs. Could someone offer that resolution?
All of the resolution.
In a second.
Second.
Clark, please take roll, please.
Yes. Natalie Knutson.
Yes.
Melanie Cole.
Yes.
Matthew Lim.
Yes.
Missy Vermees, yes. Steven Biggessa.
Yes.
Kirby Anderson.
Yes.
The resolution is adopted.
All right, then we'll move on. Fundraising activity request scheduled between February first, twenty twenty-four through September thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. Can I get a motion to approve that?
So moved.
In a second.
Second.
Any discussion on that? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. That has been approved. Then we have the Governor's proclamation of paraprofessional recognition. Whereas Minnesota is home to more than twenty thousand paraprofessionals who provide services in multiple settings within schools, including support for instruction, student activities, and individual students, as well as numerous other tasks that contribute to educational success. And whereas the support and services provided by paraprofessionals are integral to student achievement resulting in more effective Minnesota schools. And whereas the State of Minnesota and the Minnesota Department of Education are committed to excellence in education and recognize the important role that paraprofessionals play ensuring educational success. And whereas the Minnesota Department of Education will celebrate the contributions of paraprofessionals during Paraprofessional's Recognition Week, which runs from January twenty-second through January twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-four. Now, therefore, the Governor of Minnesota, Tim Walz, hereby proclaims the week of January twenty-second through January twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-four as Paraprofessional's Recognition Week in the State of Minnesota. Someone offer that resolution and for adoption?
I will.
I'll second.
Missy, will you take roll?
Yes.
Steven Biggessa.
Yes.
Kirby Anderson.
Yes.
Natalie Knutson.
Yes.
Melanie Cole.
Yes.
Matthew Lim.
Yes.
Missy Vermees, yes. The resolution is adopted.
Thank you. And then can I get a motion to approve the Adams Trust easement agreement?
I'll make that motion.
In a second.
Second.
Any discussion on that one?
This is just part of the driveway or something. It just cuts across the corner. They're probably.
Coming up from the north to the east of the apartment complex.
Seventy-five by seventy-five feet. Just, how do we count with the three thousand and thirty dollars?
They came up with that figure.
Okay. I can hear a number. Okay.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. And our next regular school board meeting is Monday, February twelfth, twenty twenty-four, at five fifteen here in the community room. Could I get a motion to adjourn?
So moved. Second.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. Our meeting is adjourned.